Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for November 14, 2017. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up our good friend George Monroe from Evanston Avenue Baptist Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So anybody that would like to join us, please do. And if you could stand, if you want to join us. George?
Shall we begin? I do, Henry Father, again, I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, Lord. I thank you for each and every one that came out. I thought we praised, though, that you would be with our clerk and our commissioners, our mayor and our manager, Lord, that you would protect them at all times and be with us meeting, and we'll give you all the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, George. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Renssipica?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Well, I know that everybody's looking kind of hungry, so we have a special presentation prior to us digging into the meat of tonight's meeting. I'd like to invite up the president, the fourth president, since the inception of the NIMs Neighborhood Association, Jen Sinaki.
I'm actually here for something good this time. We are in partnership with Kohl's Quality Foods. We came up with the idea to make a garlic bread out of, it's their bread and their, like, spread that they put on it, but it's our herbs that we grew in our community garden that we started this summer. So we're fundraising for our playground and our community garden fund, and we have samples tonight, right, ladies? It's $4 a loaf, or six for 20, and we had 1,200 loaves to sell, and Kohl's donated all of it. We don't have to give them anything. So it was really cool. We went, a few weeks ago, we went and we got to see how they make it. Deb was there. We actually put the labels on, on the production line and everything. We got a tour of how they operate. It was awesome. So it's really good. It really is. My kids say it's better than their regular kind.
All right. Commissioner German will order 800 of those.
Hey, hey, just charge us two.
Yeah, 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 I should have seen that one coming.
So if you want to order tonight, come see me after, and we're having tomorrow night at our Savior's Lutheran Church on Southern, we're going to distribute. So, and if you couldn't make it tomorrow night, then we can figure something else out.
Very good.
It really is good.
It is good. We made it through our second loaf this week.
I'm going to have them pass it down so they all get them. No, we don't. They're all, actually, they've been, Kohl's has been awesome. They're all sitting in their freezer, waiting for us to get them out, so.
Sweet.
You did, right?
Thank you.
You know, I'm just going to take a little small piece there. You should just.
Thank you.
That started.
Where's the spaghetti?
Oh, darn it.
I'll be bringing the lasagna to our potluck. So show up at our potluck. Yeah, what, what date is that? Monday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's right.
And our Savior's.
And our Savior's.
Neighborhood. We'll welcome our neighbors to the neighborhood.
Right.
We're bringing all leftover turkey and stuffing casserole.
It is better than the original.
Thank you.
But, great, great project. I'm so glad to see Kohl's Quality Food fully engaged once again.
And they've been really great about all of it, yeah.
They are, so. I know that they have some new product line.
Yep.
They're ramping up on two, but this type of interaction, it's, it's great to see, you know, our corporate neighbors fully engaged in the neighborhood. Thank you for your hard work.
And thank you, guys, for letting me come down here.
I want my free bread. So, that's all good. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Teresa. Mr. Mangager?
Oh, yes. I have one other thing, too. So for at least the four years that I've been here, and probably for a number of years, certainly before that, when we had public works issues and things pop up, we had a gentleman standing up there at that, at the microphone answering our questions by the name of Mohammed Al Shattel. About six weeks, everybody knows that Mohammed retired and moved on to the next phase of his life. But going forward, we will have a new face standing up there, and joining us, one week on the job so far, is Ms. Leann Mikesol, and she's there in the back of the room. And Leann Mikesol is our new director of municipal services, replacing Mohammed Al Shattel.
The roads already look better, Leann. Thank you.
So, so I would say, I would say, just, just plan on, we have, when we have those questions and things coming up, Leann's going to be the person up here answering your questions, and we're just, we're really excited to have her onboard.
It's, it's great, it's great to have you. For a few of us, we do have a working relationship in the past with the director, as she's a former planning commissioner, having sat on that body for a period, so, again, welcome, Madam Director, and we look forward to many, many, many productive and exciting and fun years with you.
And, you know, just for a bit of background, I'll point out that she trained for 20 years at MDOT for this position, so, so we think that she's very well-trained and ready to get the grant running.
Do you know where they keep the grant money? We'll talk about that later. Okay, gotcha. Again, welcome aboard. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the October 24, 2017, regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Market manager, city clerk, summary request. For the past year, the market has grown with more activities, use of the kitchen, and the food hub pilot program. With the addition of three food truck rallies, dining in the dark, farm-to-table event, Halloween, bash, et cetera, in just the last year or so, the market has grown beyond a part-time market manager. This past year, the market manager averaged 35 hours per week, with plenty more to do if able to. Staff recommendation to create a full-time position for market manager. Sale of parking lot, city manager, item removed per staff request. 1078 Second Street and 1180 Fourth Street purchase, city manager, summary request. Staff was recently presented with the opportunity to purchase these properties for a combined cost of $79,000. Staff plans to convert the properties to single-family residences and to return them to the neighborhood as private owner-occupied homes. These houses will be purchased and rehabbed with public improvement funds rather than CDBG home funds in an effort to create affordable housing with income restrictions, without income restrictions. Staff recommendation, authorize city manager to enter into a purchase agreement for 1078 Second Street in the amount of $55,000 and 1180 Fourth Street in the amount of $24,000. Windward Point Master Planning, city manager, summary request. The city and pure Muskegon have the opportunity to engage a world premier waterfront redevelopment master planning organization to help guide the vision of the former SAPI site. DPZ co-design is widely recognized as a leading expert in the latest best practices for planning urban design and sustainable mixed-use development in waterfront communities. The cost to bring DPZ into Muskegon to conduct the full master planning process is significant. DPZ will spend a number of days in Muskegon gathering data, conducting public meetings, and developing a sustainable 21st century plan for the site. As part of the SAPI paper mills closing, approximately $500,000 was left to the city to help mitigate the effects of the plan's closure. Staff is asking that $75,000 of those funds be allocated to the master planning process for Windward Point. The cost, the total cost of the process is expected to exceed $250,000. Staff recommendation, authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the SAPI Economic Development Fund. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate Planning Economic Development. 341 Terrace Point Circle, summary request. An application for an NEZ certificate has been received from Robert and Michelle Clankie for the new construction of a home at 341 Terrace Point Circle. The estimated cost for construction is $342,573. The applicant, the applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate Planning Economic Development, 307 Terrace Point Circle, summary request. An applicant for an NEZ certificate has been received from Jesus Cutie for the new construction of a home at 307 Terrace Point Circle. The estimated cost for construction is $319,400. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate Planning Economic Development for 345 Terrace Point. Summary request, an applicant, an application for an NEZ certificate has been received from Gordon and Kimberly Schudick for the new construction of a home at 345 Terrace Point. The estimated cost for construction is $380,036. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate for Planning Economic Development, 656 Terrace Point. Summary request, an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone certificate has been received from Patrick Loubridge for the new construction of a home at 656 Terrace Point. The estimated cost for construction is $284,705. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate Planning Economic Development, 315 Terrace Point Circle. Summary request, an application for an NEZ certificate has been received from Cheryl Parker for the new construction of a home at 315 Terrace Point Circle. The estimated cost for construction is $347,032. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
Items B and D.
How is it? B?
B as in boy, D as in David.
Any others?
Item E. Edward.
Any others?
I, did you have another? I move we accept the agenda as presented minus items B, D, and E.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented minus item B, D, and E. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, Commissioner Turnquist?
I'd like to move that we create a full-time position for the market manager.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Renssipica to create a full-time position for the market manager. Commissioner Turnquist?
Now, my question is, we're like outsized, we have a person from a temporary establishment managing the market, working about 35 hours a week.
Correct.
You're recommending to go with a full-time and become an employee of the city?
Yes.
What are our advantages to that?
Well, when we, honestly, when we did the math, first of all, we found that with benefits and everything, it's going to cost us approximately $4,000 more a year versus what we're doing right now. And with that, we also get an additional five hours more a week, and we will not be paying, we would work out something where we're going to do like flex time. So typically, the market manager works more in the summer, so, you know, when they, when they do so, they could work, you know, 45 or 50 hours, but we would be, they would be able to save up that time and then take off time in the winter, so we're not necessarily using up all or overtime, if that makes, if that helps. Also, it reassures that we would be able to keep a market manager when you offer somebody a full-time position versus working a temporary where they don't get any time off, they have no medical benefits, you know, we're going to get the security of having somebody.
That's the part I question, we're adding hours, up to 40 hours, and you're considering the person who's now in the job to hire her, or he or she, as the manager? What, I guess my question is that we're adding an employee, and $4,000, you're talking about salary part of it, but it's going to be additional cost for all the fringe benefits that we give.
That is, that's the total additional cost, including fringe benefits, everything.
Everything for $4,000.
Finance figured out, everything for me figuring out, benefits, the cost of benefits, the salary, everything like that, it's about $4,000 more a year.
I thought it'd be more than that, that's a bargain.
That's what we thought, too.
Yeah, if I could point out, Commissioner, part of the reason why they're so close there is, is we pay a premium to the, obviously, to the, to the temporary agency, and I think it's, it's north of 35%. And so when you look at even a typical benefit package, even if it's coming in at 40%, it's really only, it's a, the, the cost difference is only incremental, the difference is what we're getting for that 40% as employees, we're paying for employees' benefits versus paying for the company's overhead.
Normally, $4,000 wouldn't cover the fringe benefit part, but if that's in the total package, that's a bargain.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Warren?
Um, I don't see Michelle here, I don't think, so if you can relay the message, I'm so excited about this. I've been shocked that the position hasn't been full-time sooner with everything that is expected of, of the market manager, and I just can't say enough about how wonderful of a job she does accommodating the many, I mean, the market has been the source, right? I mean, everybody's been reaching out, whether it's, of course, the farmers, or the entrepreneurs, or the nonprofits, or the kids events, or, I mean, just so, so much. So she does a great job, and I'm ecstatic that this will be a full-time position for us.
It is, and, and the market deserves it, the position deserves to be full-time, especially because I worry about both the physical and mental health of Ann and Michelle, because it's getting crazy.
For many reasons, right?
But you, you see some of the new initiatives, and, and that's just, you know, tip of the iceberg, especially because the, the market is becoming known, not just statewide, but, you know, regionally within the Great Lakes for its potential in some major new initiatives, so it needs to be given all kinds of tender loving care, and we, and we got to give some tender loving care to the folks that keep it running, and, and give them that resource that it definitely deserves.
And I would let you know that Michelle would be here tonight. She's out of state with a sick family member, but otherwise, she's very excited about this opportunity.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson?
No, I actually agree with both of my fellow commissioners on this, that the market is deserving, and I, and I do believe Michelle is deserving. I would like some clarification, though, because we're being asked to create the full-time position, which I think is very much warranted and needed, especially as the market activities continue to expand and grow. But I'm just wondering, are we still going to be posting, even though?
Yes.
Pretty much just a shoo-in, I mean, given her, her exemplary performance, but we're still are going to go through the normal posting of a job, and maybe we do get a phenomenally better candidate, but we're still going to go through the normal process of posting and accepting applications.
Yeah, she doesn't count as an internal candidate, because she's not a, she's not an internal employee. Anything else, commissioners? Vice Mayor?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Johnson said, that, that was, that would have been my question, is are we posting that job and not just saying, well, here we go, we open this position?
No, it will be posted.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Renssipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would make motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement for 1078 Second Street in the amount of $55,000 and an 1180 Fourth Street in the amount of $24,000.
Support.
Been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Commissioner Renssipica to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement for 1078 Second Street in the amount of $55,000 and 1180 Fourth Street in the amount of $24,000. Commissioner Turnquist?
My question is, is the whole procedure, are, we're buying a couple of houses that need some renovation work, and then we are going to sell them on the, on the market?
Correct. Can it?
And that's the end of our liability with those two buildings.
Correct. There'll be, there'll be rehab, just like we do all of our other rehabs. The only difference between this rehab and the ones we've done in the past is I'm proposing that we do not use the CDBG home dollars, we instead use more unrestricted dollars, so that we're not restricted on who we can sell and do at the end.
Now, are we giving any other incentives to the potential buyers of these properties?
I mean, that's not the intention, I wouldn't, I would expect we would sell them at whatever market rate is. No, I don't think either of these are in the NEZ, I don't think we would give NEZs on either one of these. Those are really the only things that we could, that we could give them.
So it's kind of going to be an in-and-out transaction, hopefully we'll get our investment back.
Yep, and the goal is, on these ones, which we haven't yet done in the past, is, is to use the capacity that we have, which is Tim Harvey and our, you know, our on-staff builder, to kind of rehab these, you know, over the next few months on the zone, so it'll, it'll keep the cost down from, from our standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Jen? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You.
All right. That kind of goes to my question, because I was wondering what the process is, the next steps in terms of actually rehabbing it, you know, what the costs are going to be involved in that. I mean, we're going to approve the purchase, but then, you know, if it costs $100,000 each house to rehab, that it... Will come back. Yeah, I mean, it would give us pause, and, you know, cause some concern, and like, is that, is it really worthwhile investment in that regard? So, I understand where our general contractor is going to be working on it, but in terms of like his purchase orders, and if he needs to hire other labor or whatnot, I mean, is that, that's all going to be overseen by you, Mr. Manager, and when do you, when would you come back to us and say, hey, you know, are you going to come with a budget that we're going to approve for, that you can spend up to on rehabbing it, or what's the next step of process for the actual rehabbing of the homes?
That's actually, that's actually a really good question. But the, the goal is to get, to get Tim in there and put together a budget for both of them. Actually, we've, we've been inside the houses, and we look at them, and they could take, you know, depending on the, the quality, right, and the quality of the rehab, they could take minimal amount of work, or they could have taken, you know, a lot of work, depending on what we decide to put into. Our, our goal is to put a budget together for Tim to follow, and then, obviously, I only have approval of, what, $7,500 on my home, so if it's above that, then I'll be back here, you know, with a, get a budget set for, for each of those houses.
With the totality, not just, you're not going to use it for each, and here's, here's a, here's some parts, and here's some panels, and...
If it's, for example, if it's, if we think it's going to be a $20,000 rehab, then, then we'll come back.
I like pieces parts, because you always got to run back to Menards for something, because you forget it.
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I would just like to see an overall budget, that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be, we'll set a budget, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll come back, guys, when we have a really good idea of what we think the market will bear and what we really think needs to happen to the houses.
Okay.
Once we've had a chance to really get inside of them. Right now, they're, one of them's, two of the units are occupied, one of them's vacant, and, you know, to really take a deep dive into what, you know, what, you know, what they should look like, you know, should they still, once a three unit, should be a one unit, you know, and, and just understand how we need to convert those into the best, the best end result for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, commissioners, on this? Commissioner?
One more question, what's the average market value of a home in this neighborhood?
Oh, jeez, I think it's all over the place, you know, we, we've sold houses at, you know, in Midtown Square for, you know, $170,000, but obviously, we're seeing one of these be purchased for $24,000. So I would say that there's a, that there's a bit of a, there's, there's a bit of a gap there, you know, wide, a wide range, but I think what we found was that if we do, you know, nice reasonably affordable homes, still, they will sell in the neighborhood, so.
The average market value of homes in there, excluding Midtown, was in the 120s to 130s?
I would say, we haven't seen them quite that high in the Nelson neighborhood, aside from maybe down on Jefferson Street or on Muskegon Webster, we've, we've seen them up that high. I would say the one on, on Second Street, that probably on the high end will be a $100,000 house, at the very high end. The goal is to get in and out of there for under that, obviously. The house on, on Fourth Street, I think, has a little bit of a, of a higher ceiling. It's a bigger house, it's probably in a more sought-after neighborhood, it's right next to all the Midtown Square development. I think there's a chance that that one would, would be, would be able to be above $100,000, I don't know how much above.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssipica?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item E, Commissioner German?
Yes, I authorize expenditure of $75,000 from the SAPI Economic Development Fund.
Support.
Been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Johnson, authorize expenditure of $75,000 from the SAPI Economic Development Fund. Commissioner German?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So we're being asked to give $75,000 out of this fund. Is this fund part of any of the taxpayers' fund, or did they have any say-so in this, or collected from tax, property taxes?
So the fund originated as a, I don't want to call it gift, I don't know if that's the right term, but when SAPI Fine Paper left Muskegon, the city management at the time negotiated with them as part of the condition they were leaving, was that they created this fund, and they gave the city this half a million dollars to, to invest as they saw fit, as a way to mitigate the loss of the, of the, of the paper mill. We've used it a couple of times, or one for sure time, we used it, we loaned some dollars out of it, remember, to Kerry Post, our Port City Development, and built those townhouses on clay. I don't know, I don't think that, I think the other times we've loaned out, I don't think we've probably used that fund, but this will be the first time probably we've used it, and expect it to be a sunk, a sunk cost, where we don't anticipate, you know, the dollars coming to us, so it'll be a true, a true expenditure, you know, down of the fund.
Okay, and the city doesn't own any other property down there at Windward?
No.
Okay, so I guess my next question is, okay, why are we putting up to $75,000? Why property owners won't do that?
Well, the, the reason why, why the city's, I guess, being asked to consider it is because it's such a large piece of our property, of our, of our city, it's such a, it's such an important, I guess, piece of the future of our community, and we want to make sure that the right due diligence is done on that property to get the, the type of development that's going to move our city, you know, in, in the right direction long-term from a sustainability standpoint. And we think, from a staff standpoint, we think that it's money well-spent to bring, to bring this, this group in, to help us figure out what that vision should be, and what it is, and what a, what a successful waterfront development looks like in Michigan or, or anyplace. Some of the commissioners were at the DPZ meeting today to kind of get to know those folks, maybe they can weigh in on, on some of the things that DPZ talked about, as, as to, and some things previously talked about, as why it's important that we have a well-qualified group in here, so that it doesn't end up being a suburban development, or, or, or a development that doesn't have the proper density, or, or utilize the waterfront, or have the right amount of public, you know, space, all those sorts of things that we know are important to the neighborhoods and to the community as a whole. We want to make sure somebody's in there to help us essentially vet those out and, and put a vision together.
And I understand that, but I, I just want to get clarity to make sure that, okay, I know the gift came from SAPI.
Yep.
Okay, but it has nothing to do with taxpayer funds or anything? There, it's clear from that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because my next question is, how is the taxpayer going to benefit from this, right?
Yeah, from, well, I would say from a well, from a well-designed, long-term, sustainable development there, at the end of the day, that's what they would benefit most from, from the tax, from essentially the taxes that are generated from the population growth, you know, from, from all those sort of things that, that a good plan, a well-thought-out plan and a sustainable and realistic plan. Having that on any site in the community, but in particular, one that's as, you know, as prominent as a SAPI site, the citizens at the end of the day will, will benefit from that. And maybe it's more of a, more of a trickle-down, but when we do planning citywide, for the most part, we're planning for the community, just like, just like this property. We don't necessarily own the properties that we're drawing master plans of for, I mean, really ever. And then we're kind of viewing this as kind of a portion of the city's long-term master planning, and that's our, that's our, our investment in that, in that process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I would say near-term benefit. I mean, you're absolutely right, long-term, generating the tax revenues and getting, getting that contributing to supporting our city is definitely a long-term benefit. I'd say near-term benefit of this is having that very thoughtful, concerted, holistic approach to planning this property and making sure that it is reflective of our community's needs and desires there for the long term. For, as, as the DPZ folks, they were talking about, this is looking out for decades, if not, you know, a half a century or more, in terms of how this development's going to meet our community's needs. And they were very, and they, and they want to get that input, and it's going to be driven by input from stakeholders and government leaders and community leaders and elected officials, helping the public as well to inform that process. And they're not coming in with their own plans and this is what we're going to do. It's going to be driven more organically from the community to serve the community. And I really like their emphasis on environmental sustainability and cultural social sustainability as well and integrating that into it. So I, I think that, you know, I, I like the approach that they're taking with, with the, the master planning and how it integrates into our own master plan for, for the city overall. And given that this funding did ultimately come from a operation that used to be located at that property, and it's, it's just a portion of it, it's sizable, you know, $75,000, nothing to turn your nose up at, but I, I think it is a worthwhile investment on our part to come alongside them in this regard. Could we, do you know what approximately our economic development stands at today? Because it's grown. It's not just $500,000 anymore. It's kind of grown, hasn't it?
I wish I could put bedtime spot.
Yeah, it is more than 500,000, but not, obviously, you know, interest rates are pretty low. So we did get, we didn't get any interest from Kerry Post, or?
No, that was, the interest was abated because he built additional townhouses subsequent to that. I thought we added some additional proceeds from that and we got it up to like 800,000-ish. Didn't we, didn't we allocate some additional funding to it?
We rolled some things together, some other property that we sold, but it wasn't from SAPI.
Okay. Okay. But, yeah, that's what we're saying.
But I think it would be, you know, we'd probably cough up that, close to that amount when we're doing addendums to existing master plans and the like, and I think this will put us in very, very good stead with re-envisioning our old industrial waterfront into, you know, mixed use. And right off the bat for me, there's immediate payoff. DPZ's in Muskegon. I mean, these people are known internationally. I've been following these people for decades. It's like, holy Moses, you know? They're, they're here. Google them, look at their past, you, you would have seen their projects in magazines and journals in the past. Look up Seaside, Florida. You know, these are some of the granddaddies of new urbanism, you know, along with individuals like Richard Florida and, you know, other people. But, you know, they're here, they're going to be working with us, and I'm, I'm just highly gratified that the investment group is moving in that direction, respecting the fact that the development is in an urban center and it is going to, you know, build on that. Because so often, you get a big piece of dirt and people make it look like anything that you find off of, you know, any interchange along the highway, you know, with a, a gas station and a drive-through restaurant, and, and that's not where we're going. You know, we're, we're rebuilding this town, so. Commissioner Warren?
I just was wondering, obviously, there'll be a big chunk still in that fund. I was just wondering if there's any expectation of other things that, that maybe we would use to pay out of that fund, besides the loans that you've talked about? Is there anything?
You know, from, from my standpoint, initially, I wanted to, until that, until it became evident that something was needed to accommodate essentially the redevelopment of that site, I think, I think previous to my arrival, the thought was that those dollars would eventually be used to help facilitate the redevelopment of that site. In the meantime, my goal was to find ways to use it, regenerate it, use it, regenerate, put it to use for us instead of sitting in a bank account. And, and hopefully, we'll still be able to do that, depending on the speed at which development actually is able to occur and things in either. But I think, I think from a staff standpoint, there was always this thought that at some point, some of those dollars would be needed, you know, from a public infrastructure standpoint, whether it's Lake Shore Drive or something along those lines to, to accommodate the, you know, the, the redevelopment of that site. So eventually, the thought is we will spend that, all that money up to facilitate that redevelopment. But I think in the short term, and maybe that ends up being longer term than we want, you know, my goal is to, is to continue to, to propose things to this group that, that invested in the community and have a reasonably strong likelihood to getting it all back and then doing it again and again, until eventually we sink it someplace for good, like building a bridge or building a road or something like that. But my guess would be, at the end of the day, it'll, it'll, it'll end in infrastructure someplace, you know, on top of that site.
Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, just to clarify what I was thinking of earlier in terms of additional funds, actually, I was thinking of the property sales that hasn't closed yet, because we talked about moving that money into the Economic Development Fund. Not the one that was on the agenda tonight, but the other one, we, at one point, either Public Improvement Fund or Economic Development Fund. So there are a number of assets potentially getting commingled into that, and that's what I was thinking of.
I think the parking lot, there was a parking lot across from the LLC, the one I was...
Yeah, that's the one that was supposed to be in there.
That's the one that, that was commingled into there.
Yeah, so we are sitting on it, because that was $300,000, so we should be looking at an $800,000 economic development fund.
So there, like I said, there's more and there's just not all related to SAPI.
So we're going to have to look at that.
I'll email you guys out what the, what the balance is.
Okay. And I would, just, just to throw this in there, because I know you talked about sinking it all together one day, I wouldn't mind maintaining a balance in our economic development long-term so that we can strategically make those loans and not only into the mega projects and the giant developments to get the ball rolling, but also looking at potentially micro loans and helping to support entrepreneurship in our community and in our neighborhood. So, you know, that's just another piece to consider separately in terms of economic development long-term. We've used it, I think, adeptly up to now, and I'm just thinking long-term, I wouldn't mind keeping a fund in existence to help support economic development continuously in our city's future.
Could I get along? I need new countertops that would improve the value of my home and...
No.
Oh, never, okay.
At, at the risk of, of beating up on this too, one of the, one of the aspects that I see a manager has a, a big benefit of bringing a, a group like DPZ in, that does projects like this all over the world, I think they can help bring perspective to the, to the site, that those of us who lived here for a long time that look at it and see it just as an old paper mill and, you know, an old piece of property, you know, we heard from those, these people who do these, these kind of projects all over the world, and, and even the gentleman that, that was there today said, this is a special place, you know, they've seen, they've done a lot of sites. And they talked about how of all the sites they, they've done, this one, you know, there's something about this site, you know, where they talked about how it has everything from the water and, and how do you find 130 acres on, on a, on a, on a deep water port and near, you know, near places like Lake Michigan. And, and I think bringing those folks in and, and talking to us and talking to the public will help bring the perspective of what really we have there in terms of value, from a value standpoint, and how important it is to get it to essentially maximize the end result out of that property and not, not settle for something less than what our community really, truly deserves because of the asset that we have sitting here that other communities could only dream of having.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Turquist?
The first withdrawal from the SAPI fund was repaid, so it got back to its original amount. This withdrawal will begin the depletion of the SAPI fund.
Correct.
It's not going to come back.
Correct.
Anything we spend, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, just to confirm, this such planning activity is not a brownfield reimbursement qual, doesn't qualify for brownfield readers, isn't it right?
I don't think so. I think if it was, they would be, they would be getting it, and maybe it is. I'm not that, I'm not the brownfield expert. But we did look at the, just so you know, we didn't just immediately jump on, on providing these people dollars, we went to the MEDC first and talked about, hey, you know, we are redevelopment-ready communities, you said there'd be dollars for planning and stuff like that, what do you think about, what do you think about using some of those dollars for this tiny project? There's one caveat that we didn't realize is if we don't own the property, they won't invest in it. So because it's privately owned, it kind of, the redevelopment-ready money that was kind of told to us would be available to us, it's only really for projects, for master planning projects, the properties that we have an interest in, our owners' interest.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentsch-Masibia?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing is item A, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, KLL Acquisition Planning and Economic Development, summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, KLL Acquisitions LLC 700 Terrace Point has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be locating its corporate headquarters at this location, which will result in a real property investment of almost $450,000 and will create up to 35 new jobs. This qualifies them for a tax abatement of 12 years under the city's IFT policy. Staff recommendation, approval of the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property.
Good evening, Mr. Francic. Good evening, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. Back in August, we came before the board to request an industrial development district, which is approved. Shortly thereafter, the company applied for their permits and began work. They're wrapping up their work there now. It's at what's known as the former SPX building. They are now the largest kayak manufacturers in the world, and their corporate headquarters will be located, located down there on Terrace Point. We have Mr. Dan Harris here tonight with the company, and DeWanna Thompson also spoke with them regarding their EEO plan, so I'll let her talk about that.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, we spoke with the, regarding the EEO plan back in June when they did their other IFT, and so that one is going to be good for this one as well. And, but we did go over the numbers for their employment, and currently, they have 229 employees. They have 82% Caucasian, 18% minority, 78% male, and 22% female.
Any questions for staff? Vice Mayor?
Of that 18% minority, how many African-American male and female?
There are 24 African-American males and six females for a total of 30 African-Americans.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Are there any, well, Dan, did you want to?
Sure.
Give a thumbnail sketch?
Yes. So I'm back again, seems like a regular spot for me the last few years. Going by what they said, yes, we, the last five or six years have seen an incredible demand for our products, much greater than my family ever could have imagined when we started out with this in 2010 and decided to build a kayak tool. Quickly, within the next six years, we've added hundreds of employees, millions of dollars worth of equipment, and we're at the point now where we're continuing to outgrow our facilities, the corporate offices that we're planning on down at Terrace Point will allow us to be much more efficient, move three corporate offices into one, just, just make it a lot easier for us to get information back and forth with everybody. This is one of several products, projects we still have going. I think the total is a little over 9 million that we plan on spending in the next little while. We've got four equipment we're buying. Most of you know, we've acquired a company out of Montreal that we're trying to integrate into Muskegon. The bulk of that manufacturing will come here. So it's been, it's been great. It's, we've appreciated the cooperation we've had with the city of Muskegon. We're really excited that New Water Capital chose this as the corporate headquarters for the kayak. It just, it just was a great fit for it.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're expecting a lot more good things out of our partners. There's a lot of things on the drawing board, a lot of projects we're looking at, different companies we're looking at, so it's, I think we're here for a long time, and, and this is important to us to, to keep it rolling for the city of Muskegon.
Appreciate that. Vice Mayor?
This, I see here it says we will create 35 new jobs?
Yes.
Okay.
That will probably be just in the skilled, well, when I say skilled, it's going to be more office personnel.
Mm-hmm.
I think totally we're shooting for like 150.
150 new jobs?
Yeah.
And there'll be entry-level jobs or jobs?
Entry-level, yeah. The, the nice thing about our company is that you can start out entry-level, doing just repetitive assembly work, but you have the opportunity to, to grow up into the manufacturing side and learn a trade of operating machinery, which, you know, those, those are $20 an hour plus jobs.
That's great.
So we, we have 229 employees, is what we have now, but that's, you know, we're kind of a seasonal company, so we will, I think, last year we jumped to 400, almost 400 people that we had during the busy season, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner German?
Yes, congratulations on your successful business.
Thank you.
Appreciate you choosing Muskegon for your central location. Out of those 35 jobs, are there going to be, you say, basic office jobs?
Yes.
And are you doing your manufacturing at this location, or is there another location where you're doing your manufacturing?
We have actually three manufacturing sites in Muskegon, all located off the highway and near Sherman and Lakethan Avenue. This is just the renovation of the corporate office.
Okay.
That used to be SPX down on, down on the lake.
Okay. And then, like, administrative jobs, corporate jobs?
Customer service, sales, accounting, purchasing, things like that.
And going back to the EOC compliance, okay, out of, on those corporate jobs, executive presidents, vice president, how many of those are African-Americans or minorities?
I couldn't tell you the number right now.
Do you have any at, at that level?
Yeah, we have a couple that I know about the top of my head.
African-Americans or?
No.
Okay.
Other minorities.
Okay, okay. All right. When we talk about diversity and inclusion, I, I look at a balance of equitable input to be able to actually sit at the table, make decisions from, you know, different, you know, ethnicities. And that's my take when we talk about diversity. We do know, yeah, if you hire people in the manufacturing, the labor position, but be at the table to make these decisions, to inform others and show actually leadership roles for other ethnicities also, you know, I would like to see that. Of course, that's up to you and your corporation to make those decisions and point those type of employees that's definitely qualified to meet those standards, so, thank you.
Absolutely. We work with a number of temp, well, I don't want to call them necessary temp agencies, but placement agencies that will facilitate helping us find the needs that will fulfill positions we have open in our company. So we rely on them heavily to do some pre-screening, do some other things to make sure that the candidates are a fit for our company, and we go strongly by their recommendations.
Right, right. And like engineers, I, I work at Muskegon Community College, and so does Commissioner Dan down there, and we definitely believe in our, you know, motivating our students to, you know, have future employment, you know, to have them succeed, but to, you know, look at opportunities such as, you know, making decisions and engineers for opportunities such as your corporation and stuff like that.
Absolutely. I think I did speak with human resources, and we did get some information from Muskegon Community Policy governing that.[1787.26]
Oh, excellent.
You have the available engineers.
Yeah, yeah.
We have available positions.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when do you expect the corporate headquarters to be open, essentially?
Well, it's supposed to be Thanksgiving, but whoever's worked with contractors knows it, it kind of gets delayed. So I did see an email come across, I guess this morning, that said December 19.
Okay.
Looks like it might be completed and to be open, so.
So it'll be a Christmas present for everyone.
That's what we're hoping.
Are you going to have an impromptu holiday party? That'll be your holiday party slash grand opening for the new, new headquarters. So you're in the process of staffing right now then for, for your headquarters? And that's where you're using the different placement agencies to find candidates? And so you're recruiting from all over the country then, not necessarily just focusing on here?
Yeah, actually, yeah. The bulk of it's Muskegon here, but there are some specialty positions that we've had to walk into national recruiters. Engineering being one of them. There's such demand.
All over the country, yeah.
You guys have some very interesting plastic production technologies, so they're not just like plastic injection molding, so.
Right, right.
They're specialized.
We really have a need in that area.
Okay, excellent. Well, congratulations again. Happy to see the progress, happy to see your offices open and more of that vibrance and vitality happening downtown in our waterfront, so.
Yeah, we're excited to have 40 jobs moved downtown.
I'm looking forward to that kayak festival coming up.
Right.
Eventually.
And while, you know, Montreal's a very fine town, this is a pretty damn good town too, and I'm glad you're here.
We like it, right.
That's great stuff. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Take care. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the issue of the request for industrial facilities exemption certificate for KLO acquisition? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Commissioner Johnson?
I move to close the public hearing and approve a resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property.
Second? Then moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for real property referencing KLO acquisition. Any further questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissamisibia?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other business to bring before the body this evening? Commissioner German?
Yeah, well, I see Ms. Bailey in the chamber. If I could have you just come to the podium, sorry to pick on you. Reason for me asking Mrs. Bailey to come to the podium, I'd just like her to brief us on where we are with the hiring for the housing commission director.
Sure. Well, today the housing board of commissioners did meet, and today the board chair was going to offer the job to Angela Mayhew. So I don't know what happened with that, but that was the plan. The physical was good, and so we're anticipating a new executive director for the Muskegon Housing Commission to start at the beginning of the year. So it was the consensus, pretty much, of the board to direct her to make that offer, and having spoken with the candidate, she's very excited about the position. She currently works out of the city and is anxious to get back here to Muskegon County, so.
Good.
And I'd just like to commend Mrs. Bailey on her leadership and way you facilitated and handled the interviewing process. Also, Mr. Jonathan Wilson, who's also on that board too, and his professionalism as well, so thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on our conversation last night, not rehash it, because we spoke for two hours, with regard to how to proceed with consideration of an opt-in ordinance with regard to the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. And last night, there was not enough support to formally continue that process in terms of referring the matter to the planning commission. Several commissioners indicated they needed more time to reflect, as well as they needed more answers, they needed to have more facts and information. And so I just want to, and I was remiss in not mentioning this last night, or asking my fellow commissioners this last night, but if you could, you know, submit, you know, reflect on this and submit what particulars you need to know to help make an informed decision, you know, what kinds of information you need from the city manager, from legal counsel, so that that can be prepared well in advance of the next meeting, and when we consider this in four months' time, I think that would be helpful. The mayor's right in terms of dialogue is good. I have no problem with that, and I welcome the dialogue amongst our commissioners. I just would encourage all of us, as you reflect on this, if there's particulars and answers that you need, to ask that, you know, submit that to city staff and legal counsel so we can get those answers for you, so that, you know, we can make an informed decision when it comes back to us, so, thank you.
Very good. Anything else, commissioners? If not, we can move into public comment time. Members of the public are welcome and invited to come forward to address the body here. Each individual is given three minutes, and please address me if you do have an issue. We may not always be able to give you a definite answer tonight, but then I can always pass the buck to the nearest staff member who can, you know, in all their wisdom, hopefully help you out, so. But first up, we have, hey, Mike, come on up. You know the drill. Name, address, blood type.
Michael Hallison, 903 Turner Avenue. Good evening again to everybody. I know that you've seen me up here a few times. Welcome back, Mr. Manager. Comfy underneath that bus, is it? Is it comfy under that bus since he just threw you under?
Oh, yes, yes.
Congratulations on your elections. I have no idea how I'm on your Facebook, or your Facebook's with me, but I was happy to defend you guys on what's going on with the city, and that's why I'm up here. Do we have a long-range plan on where we actually want to go? We're deep water port, does that mean we're going to go into shipping and receiving, or we're a tourist town?
All the above.
What's a long-range plan? That's what I'm curious.
Yeah.
If I could, the commission and staff get together every, once a year, and they develop like a, you know, a roadmap, and the last time we got together, we put together a vision for, I think it was like a five-year vision that we look at every year and put kind of benchmarks in there to make sure that we're moving in that direction. So the simple answer is, yeah, we think we have a vision. It's probably not an all-encompassing vision, it's really hard to have a, have a vision for every single component of what's going to happen in the community, but I can attest that we do get together on a regular basis, and we, and the commission and the staff, and mostly the commission, put together a vision, you know, for, you know, one, two, five, 10 years, and then they task staff with, you know, helping walk us towards that vision the best we can.
And then most recently, too, there's been a number of community meetings, Imagine Muskegon Lake, and those community meetings have been ongoing over the, through the past month, with additional follow-up coming.
Well, you can continue to submit input through November 22.
Right. But there we have, you know, the entire community, you know, invited to come in, much as we did within the past two decades with Imagine Muskegon, which, you know, gave us an idea of where we were going with re-imaging our downtown, the turnback of Muskegon and Webster. But when you bring, when people ask me, you know, what are we? You know, tourism, industrial, commercial port, I'm serious, it's all the above. Our advanced manufacturing, of course, you know, has taken the place of those old-line industries that used to ring, you know, the South Shore, but now they're in, you know, our industrial parks and being supported by major investments, such as the Advanced Tech Center and School of Entrepreneurial Studies that we, you know, see going up in the downtown campus from Muskegon Community College. There's much focus and investment on how to redevelop the B.C. Cobb plant for, you know, deep-water port, you know, there. And we do have an entire area designated from, you know, basically the edge of downtown, Edison Landing, all the way to the east to, you know, the river mouth, which is, you know, designated as port manufacturing. And everything to the west, you know, will look for that mixed use of, you know, commercial, residential, recreational. But that beautiful port can accommodate, you know, multiple, multiple uses.
Well, that's what I just wasn't quite understanding, because at one moment, it's, we're going to be a deep-water port, and I'm like, okay, what are you going to do with the deep-water port once you get it? Is it shipping? Is it receiving?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to tie that in with, you know, we'll continue with, you know, construction-type aggregates, and hopefully we'll be expanding into agricultural products, and sky, the sky's the limit, you know.
I was just curious if you guys had a handle on exactly where we're headed, because, like I said, to me, it felt like it was getting changed every year to two years going, oh.
Not changed, just added on.
Okay.
Okay. Multiple, multiple uses, multiple identities, we're big enough for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, have a wonderful evening. Thanks for your time.
Okay, Mike. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? Sir, I'd just have you come forward and give your name and address.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies. My name's Paul Lee's. I just moved here in April into 956 East Isabella, and on or around August 10th, the neighbor's tree, which is dying, dropped a limb on their house and on my property, broke one of my windows, not three minutes after me and my daughter had walked through that area. It was a large limb. I have pictures if you guys would like, but I'm sure that's a waste of time right now. And then on November 5th, it just dropped another limb, large enough to injure and hurt people. I've made a call to the code enforcement office about the first incident, and they told me they don't have any code on, that they enforce for that. I did some digging, I found that there is a code for noxious leaves and plants, and I asked them about that, and they said they don't enforce any code, any of that code standing trees. That code reads that if the tree is dead or dying or infected, that the property owner is liable to take it down, or the city will go in and do it, or they're liable of a civil infraction. They're, the code enforcement office is telling me they're not doing anything with anything like that, and I'm curious as to why, because it's a safety issue. Like I said, we had not, we had not walked through this three minutes before. We walked through, went out to my van, I had buckled her in her car seat, shut the door, and it fell.
Okay, all right. Don't go. Come on and get your name, your contact information, so that we can do appropriate following.
I'd appreciate it.
I have a question for you.
Sir?
You said, did you say a tree fell?
Yeah, a branch off a tree, a large whole tree.
Oh, okay, because I thought.
Not, not a whole tree, it was a.
Okay, I saw a tree had fell on the car, I thought.
No, 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 we had just, it fell across their backyard into mine and broke one of my windows, but it was a large limb. At the part that was on my side of the first one was about that big around, and on their side, it was probably about that big around, and we had just walked through where it landed not three minutes before.
Wow.
And the one that fell on November 5th, in diameter, at the bottom of it, is about that big around, it's obviously rotten. I left it in my yard in case somebody wanted, code enforcement wanted to come check it and see what fell. The other one, the property owner, because it's a rental, removed and passed his roof on his property and so on and so forth. And when I addressed him about it, he said if I, quote-unquote, if I took down every tree that could fall, I'd go broke, which kind of struck a nerve with me, because it's my family's safety.
Sure. Yeah, well, we'll have to look at exactly what the situation is, you know, I can't promise the best answer, but I want to give you a good answer.
No, no, that's fine, like I said, I called once. I told them there was no code for it. I called again after researching and finding code that covered it, and that was yesterday. She said, she talked with her boss today, and he said that if the tree's standing, they don't do anything with it, they don't enforce that code, whatever, and she transferred me to his voicemail, left him a message, he has not called me back yet.
Okay.
I just found out about the meeting tonight, because like I said, I'm new here, so I heard about the meeting, and I figured I wanted to come.
Absolutely.
Find out about this.
Absolutely, okay. Don't go, we'll get, we'll make sure we get your good contact, and welcome home to Muskegon.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You got it. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's nothing, huh?
Yeah, but we've got something.
Could we have Mr. Franzak, because we talked about Imagine Muskegon Lake, you talked about the workshop process, and I just wonder if we could have Mr. Franzak give us an update, because we've already had two workshops, and the information is now on the website. If you could just give some information about where we're at in the process, what's available on the website, how people can get ahold of you and submit feedback, up to, you know, November 22nd, and what the follow-up will be after that, or the process will be.
Yep, so we've had two public workshops. The first one was very well-attended, we had over 150 people show up, and we had some very good input. We held a second makeup workshop for anyone that couldn't make it, we had probably about 10 or 12 people show up to that one. We had one stakeholder meeting, which focused on some of the larger parcels that are undergoing some change or have the potential for change on the lakefront. We had one of those in October, we have a second one coming up, October, or I'm sorry, November 27th, and that will be basically all the data we're going to be collecting in terms of putting the plan together. Jamie and I will be going to the consultants' offices on Friday to kind of put our heads together and see how we want to approach this plan. You know, there was a lot of ideas of how this plan was going to come together and what it's going to look like, so we're trying to develop where we want to focus and how we want to have this play out, whether it's going to be a plan, or it looks like it could potentially become more of a strategy, like with our parking strategy that we've developed with these contractors. So we still have the public comment open, and I can give you my business card, sir, before you leave, and you can go on our website, we have all of the information that was available at the public meetings, we have those all online, we have them printed out in our office as well, if you don't have access to a computer, and you can contact the planning department at any time, and we can go over those maps with you, and we can help you share your ideas and your thoughts for the Imagine Muskegon Lake plan.
Very good.
Would you mind sharing your phone number or email, you know, for audience here and at home on television, so that if they need to contact you to schedule to come down and take a look at it? Of course, they can go onto our shorelinecity.com, and the left-hand side, it says Imagine Muskegon Lake public participation, but if you could, wouldn't mind sharing your contact information?
So the planning department's number is 724-6702, and you can ask for Mike Franzak or Jamie Pesh. My email address, I'm the one taking all of the comments for the plan, so if you have a chance to look at those, you can email your comments to me at mike.franzak, which is F as in Frank, R-A-N-Z-A-K, at shorelinecity.com.
Thank you.
And we're looking at, we were hoping to have the plan kind of wrapped up before the new year. Plans generally go on a little bit longer than you expect, but we're somewhat on pace, and we think we can get it wrapped up by January still, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Richard, thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
I don't have anything about this, I don't know if anyone else does. No. So I just wanted to touch on the yearly visioning that we do, because the document, I think, that's been put together, that shows our goals and the key areas we've identified, and then the progress on those goals yearly and where we want to go. I know when we, when we completed that, I think it was in January that we've done it in the past, that document has been really helpful for neighborhood associations or residents that want to see more of that kind of working timeline that speaks to the vision and speaks to, so my question is, where is that for people to see and read?
That's a good question. I think it's on the website, but I couldn't tell you exactly where. Why don't you let me make sure it is there? If it's not there, put it there, and then we'll let everybody know how they can find it. Otherwise, if they do want to see it, A, I can email them a copy if they want to see it, or they can pick up one in my office, and we can make it available to them that way as well.
I just think it's really helpful, the way that it's set up there.
Actually, I do know where it is.
Actually, I do know where it is. We embedded it in the budget this last year too. So anybody who gets online and looks at the city budget, it's actually included in all the narrative of the budget. There's, you know, those, those 10 or 12 pages are included in there before you actually get to the numbers, the number section of the budget, there's our goal-setting or our, our action plan, I guess you'd call it, is included in there.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Take her away, Vice Mayor.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
I'm sorry, what was that? It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by, that's Johnson with a J, correct? Commissioner Johnson to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, thanks for answering. Any in opposition? Okay, good night, all.
All the time.